We're seven o'clock on the nose. When you're ready, I'm ready. So, you ready?
Let's go.
Sure.
All right.
I'll call the meeting of March 12th. Village Webster Board to order. And if, Jude, do you'd like to lead it in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You need to sit here. Welcome to those who are looking in tonight. We do not have a packed house here, but maybe many are looking from home. Our first order of business would be to open up the floor to public comment. Any comments and questions to Village Board from the audience?
There's our audience.
I think that we'll probably close that portion of the meeting. The comment portion is closed, and we will move to Village Business. First item is a resolution to approve minutes from February 27th. We have the copy of the minutes in front of you. Any questions that you have? Any...I don't believe that there are any additions that need to be made to it. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next is a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. The claims I've had a chance to look over. And I didn't really have anything in particular that came to my attention. If you look this over, is there anything that you guys have?
No.
That you want to bring up? If not, then I would entertain a motion to accept the claims and warrants as written.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee, I'm sorry, trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Item three is a resolution to authorize the mayor or designate to sign the Verizon Small Wireless Facilities Master License Agreement. Don, I believe that you were pretty involved with Verizon in the discussion of this. Do you want to just give us a synopsis of what took place? I believe it was more or less in terms of a change in contract term, right?
Yeah, before it provided for an automatic renewal, so that it would last thirty years. Now it's a twenty-year term with two five-year options that are exercisable by Verizon. So, my guess is it'll be a thirty-year renewal.
Yeah, didn't pan out like I liked it.
Well, that's what options are. If you can't...you know, an option is exercisable by only one side, not both sides.
Correct.
Other than that, it's not an option.
Correct. With a short window to put it in writing that you're going to exercise it. Right?
Right. They got ninety days to do it.
Oh, I'm good, I'm happy.
They got ninety days to say whether they want to exercise the option or not.
All right.
We've got still better than the thirty-year.
Yeah.
Could turn out to be the same. So, do I have a... Motion to have the mayor sign this agreement?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Item number four is a discussion on the budget. We have had ongoing discussions. I believe you all have a copy of the latest one. Marcia, do you want to highlight any of the changes?
Uh, sure.
Because Carol has not been here.
She emailed us a lot.
Yeah, I got it.
Did you get it?
Yes.
Well, I sent an email. There were a few changes between that time and now. I have added a column only on the general fund expenditures that shows the changes since the last version that I sent out on Tuesday. Not much. And then the end result of those changes is about a twelve, eleven thousand nine hundred increase in what we intend to transfer to reserves. Really, there haven't been a lot of changes since I emailed out that handful of them on Tuesday.
Big drop in workers' comp?
Yeah. Because we went from...
New York State Insurance Fund.
Right, New York State Insurance Fund to compliance, and they do things differently. Which is kind of nice.
It did get me differently.
Question on that ban contractual. Why did that go up so much?
Because we took Tom off the payroll and put that...we just moved his pay from personnel to contractual.
Still, it's still...
Well, if you look at prior, it's like seven thousand, six thousand, almost seven.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense, okay.
Same question.
And that's, if you recall, we did that for the historian and for Tom Ingham and for the planning and zoning boards. They've all been moved from personnel to contractual.
So, you're considering that the planning and zoning board members are like independent contractors? If we need to do that, but, okay. I could see the ban in the historian because they set their own schedules, but, you know, planning and zoning, you've got to show up when the meeting's there. They really don't give...they're probably more appropriate the employees. Do they matter again? Well, it only matters that you get audited by the Department of Labor because you're not paying social security like you should.
Exactly.
You know, that kind of thing.
I have to...I need to endlessly.
So, you're saying we don't have to, or? No.
You said you research endlessly. Who do we research it with? I just wanted to know.
I talked to HR Works and NICAAM, and I talked to...some of the villages don't have them on their payroll either. It's really up to the village's choice to do that. And the reason that we were forced to report on retirement for people who were working, like, very minimally during the year. And it just made more sense. And in addition to that, if we have more people on our medical, not that they...not that they're eligible for it, but Exelis doesn't care whether they're eligible in terms of the Village Webster's policy. According to them, they're eligible.
They just look at the number of employees.
Correct. So, it makes us responsible for more things. We have to basically provide more things. So, HR Works said that a lot of municipalities don't have them on their payroll. It just made more sense for us.
What would you have? Give me an example of something that you would have to...
I don't recall exactly what it was, but as we've been working on the new policy manual, employee handbook, however you want to call it, for example, I think there was like my breast cancer testing, certain things that you have to provide. I don't...there was two things. I don't know exactly what it was. I can let you know, but...
Certain details about the health insurance that we have to make available.
Yes.
So, not saying bad or good idea, but I know we've had this conversation last week on some things. I think when we make these type of decisions, it's got to, unfortunately, in any organization, go with the legal. If legal says yes, and they say yes, and he says no, then we've got to really understand why. Just to protect him. It's not saying your information is incorrect by any means, but I...unless you disagree, I think we should just make sure. There we go. And then I think it's a great idea. So, we can get a nod, a head nod from Mr. White, we're all good.
Are we covered? We're not covered. Well, I don't know. I have not researched it endlessly. I don't know the health insurance stuff. I thought the village's policy was, is, you know, if you work part-time, you don't get health insurance. So, why Exelis should care about part-time employees, I don't know. But if they do, I don't, you know...
Right, and then HR Works can say it's okay, but they're still not...they're still not going to see this. We got a lawsuit.
HR Works, I haven't talked to anybody there. I don't know how many municipalities they represent, you know. There's differences between...it just seems to me that the planning and zoning boards, they make such a piddly amount, the amount that you gotta...the amount that you pay for social security may not be worth the risk of running afoul that they really are employees. And also, it's because they don't make that much.
So, I guess my next one should continue. Can you find...can you find that out?
Sure.
That's a little counsel.
Sure.
Unless you guys disagree, you know, speak up or just speak...
Oh, I agree.
I like the idea, and I agree with Heather. It makes sense, but you just have to make sure we're...
We're covered.
The villages do this, but what about the towns? Is it town?
I have no idea, you know, the town.
But they also have HR Works.
I'd be curious if the town was doing it. I would...that would always be my first call because they're her neighbor. You don't... All right. Good.
That's a question.
Yeah, if there's no concern, I think we go Heather's way. Thanks, Hannah. All right, sorry. What you're saying is it doesn't sound wrong. That's great, but just from a board standpoint, you say you just protect ourselves.
If we got elected, you have to.
And we all can blame Don. All right.
Again, I may be wrong, but...
And that's true.
Don't you only pay into the New York State Retirement if the part-time employee apps into the retirement system in the first place? Because you can say, "I don't want to be a member of the retirement system."
But if they already were in the New York State Retirement System, then you don't have a choice. We have...they have to return. So, Tom Ingham, we've been paying in...
Look, I'm only talking about planning and zoning. I don't disagree with the ban and historian, but there are certain criteria that is used to determine whether somebody is an independent contractor or an employee.
All right, so we need to find that out and maybe just switch it in, keep it or switch it back. Easy fix. I know. All right. Next. Do you have more questions?
I do. Remind me again, Jake, fifty-one, forty-two, two-hundred.
It's a snow removal equipment. Is that thirty thousand?
Yep.
Yes. It's the loader. We're getting information on a loader for doing a...I think ideally, I think what we're really leaning towards now is a lease agreement, like a lease purchase agreement that begins with the backhoe. The backhoe's done, being paid for now, and the loader, it doesn't have the same...we can rotate it over every year, but it softens the lower purchase, and that's about thirty. I say it's about twenty-seven or twenty-eight, but then you want to look at getting different buckets for depending on the job that we're doing. So, that's what that was. That would be for the twenty-seven was...
Does that have a versatility to it that it's used more than just for the snow removal?
It's used for snow removal.
And that's the big machine?
Yeah, yeah, the big guy. It's used primarily, the most important job, I think, is snow removal. But also, we were discussing it today, it's various different options and attachments that we would need. And one of them, our current bucket, our current one is a clamshell bucket. So, I don't even want to say that ice storm word, but if we were in an ice storm for clearing, the clamshell bucket's nice for loading stuff out. It's very helpful, a lot quicker. You know, and so it's...we use it for when we're doing street maintenance as well, loading stone and doing those things. So, it is used...it's used primarily in the winter for snow removal in all the big lots, but as I said, they have on hand if we get into some sort of natural disaster, it's...would be very important as well. I don't know if it came out in the email. There's one on the fifty-one, twelve, two-hundred, or two-oh-one, I think it is, with the vehicles. Is that update? Because I forgot a zero.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you did...
That's an email.
Okay, it is, all right. Yeah. Your truck is thirty-seven thousand five hundred and three, thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, unfortunately. Two-hundred. If you look at the actual year-to-date, and I went through a question today, there's outstanding encumbrances that don't show up in there. We have another vehicle that's ordered. It's about eighty-two or eighty-three altogether. It's fifty-nine and...
Yeah, fifty-seven.
Fifty-three and twenty-nine, the two POs. So, those are...it's about eighty-two or eighty-three that's in there. That, you know, it's still coming out. We've spent more than the fourteen, or we have, I guess, signed up for more than that fourteen, seven for sure.
Yep. What else would you like to discuss?
We're seeing a decrease in electric with the new lights that were installed. And it looks like we're basically budgeting close to the same.
Oh, for street lighting?
Yeah. Just in general, I guess that would include electric, wouldn't it?
Well, it depends on the first four. If it's fifty-one, eighty-two, and that four-hundred, four-twelve, I guess it is, that electric, street lighting electric, and that is very similar. We have about five-hundred, just under five-hundred street lights, and we changed, when we converted LED, we converted over...I think it was just right around a hundred, or maybe a hundred and four of them. So, those went down, but they were, you know, it's a high-pressure sodium lights. It went to the LED ones. So, there is a different, a new tariff, they call it, or a new fee schedule monthly on those when we converted them over. But certainly, a lot of those prices are the poles, the wires, the conduit, the head itself. They...every month, there's very...I don't want to say very little of it. It's all very expensive, but there's a good chunk of it that has nothing to do with the electricity that's there. It's the, like I said, it's the pole, the wire, the conduit, the lights. They charge it for every bit of it every month, so in case they got to go in there and fix something. It's a good one, send to me, not that one, go.
Jake, I know we've been over this before, but sixteen, twenty, two-hundred.
That's the two-hundred and eighty grand, I think, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's two-hundred and thirty. Yeah, two-hundred and thirty is for the ready project down in Sandbar Wells, which was about two-hundred and fifteen, and that's getting reimbursed. And then about fifties for the ceiling. The ceiling, the reroute, the other side of the ceiling.
Okay. It'll affect the ceiling eventually.
Yeah, yeah, so then it is.
And once we've worked through whatever questions you all have about the expenditures and the budget as it stands, I think since we're planning to put over eighty thousand dollars in reserves, we're going to have to work out which reserve accounts and what for. It doesn't make sense to just dump it somewhere.
Halloween.
We've had some trouble before because we didn't put it very long. And unfortunately, I did not bring with me the list I created of how much is in which reserve account. I attached it to the email, but I did not bring it with me.
We do meet again on the twenty-sixth. I don't know if it's too late for you.
Well, I...
Should we send it out?
We're doing a tentative. I don't know what...I can't recall the rules about when my publishing deadlines are and stuff like that. But I'm sure we've got plenty of time to publish a final approved budget.
And our next scheduled budget workshop was Monday, so I assume we have to meet at this point.
I do have input in between now and next meeting.
Thank you.
Will you bring out anyone who wanted to bring up?
Oh, looks good.
Great.
Then we have... We'll get the financial statements.
No, I'm not seeing them.
Would you like to go by them or look at them?
Yes, I can send them to you, I apologize.
Of course, it's not like, you know, bureaucratic, we don't even...we don't need to take a resolution to approve them because the statements are what they are.
I'm just...
Seeing if anything shows up.
I can go send it now. Send it right now.
Don't worry, I'm the only one that has this up here. Carol is... No, she said she could send it up. But I have my printer in the truck.
Okay, then we'll work through those. Then we can move on to...done.
I don't have anything to add.
That's short and sweet. Thank you. Now we go for...
Continue.
Comfortable.
Stretch before this one. No, I just, we're obviously still in kind of limbo mode here with the snow. We don't know what Mother Nature's going to do, so...but we are starting to get some things together. Clover Street Letters went out. We've got letters going out for, which are due next week, for tree trimming, our annual tree trimming, for those quotes. And Clover Street Letters, that was the letters to the residents, to let them know what we're doing this summer. It's pretty premature, but not really. But more, we can let people know ahead of time, you know, when they're making decisions about redoing driveways and planning things. We can get that information to them earlier the better. East Main Street Sidewalk's kind of in that same vein. East Main Street Sidewalks are going to start pretty quick. The contract has been completely executed for that and everything, so once we're confident of the weather, everything's underway, we're going to go on to that. And I'm going to try to, I think at the next meeting, try to have a list together, some surplus declarations ahead of...yeah, it'll probably be at the next meeting if I can. For things to send to the spring auction. They usually have pretty decent auctions. This year, they're doing something different where there's no seller's premium or seller's fee. Historically, if that's, it's always been ten percent. So, if we send a truck there and sell for five thousand, we get forty-five hundred back. This year, there's none. So, I want to see, you know, any of the things that we've got. Ending the surplus, kind of clean house. I was half considering seeing if we could put barn wood there, but I think there's, or depot wood, but there's too much of it to haul over to the auction site, I think, so unless we can...
That's a good idea.
Somehow bring a representative sample, but I don't know if that's...that'd be a lot to haul, I think.
Yeah.
It's quite a bit, so...and I just don't know if they'd have room. So, they do have a net auction every month, so maybe that's something to consider. There's a few different companies. There's Rockersworth, there's Auctions International, municipal. There's a few different companies. That might be an option available if there is...
They'd come and look and then take it away?
Yeah, that'd be a deal.
And I guess, especially with the wood, we'd rather have it auctioned all in one piece, you know, everything goes.
Yeah, all have it.
And, you know, two tractor trailers or whatever, and it's about what it took to get in there, more than that maybe, but...
But if there's an option?
Yeah.
I mean, maybe we should look at the options before we dismiss it. So, maybe, do you mind looking into that?
Yeah, we can certainly get that information together and see. I mean, you can even bang in the auction sites and say, "Hey, it's, you know, old barn wood or, you know, wood that type. What's it gone for? And is it worth it? And is there a..."
I mean, there's no harm in knowing.
Some places have where you can set a reserve, so you're not taking, you know, such a chance because technically, if it goes...if there's no reserve, it goes for two dollars, and someone's down there saying, "Two dollars, you don't want to do that."
No. We'll talk about that here.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And then the only, the only thing last, I was gonna talk about or just, I guess, ask, so I can take a vehicle and go to the Tree City USA thing in Albany, but I got an email earlier today that's been canceled. We're still at Tree City USA, but the meeting is not being held, and they're not gonna have one this year, so they're gonna send us our things. We got our, our four-year recognition for the Tree City USA thing, so... That's it. And I guess since I still, it seemed like it was two clips, I'll continue. The TDC responded today, this is under the sewer area, I played yesterday, just they reviewed, there's been a discussion, one part of that. So they made some comments back, and I think Glenn indicated he's gonna have a reporter...
Monday?
Monday, yeah, by Monday or something, so... And that's it.
Thank you.
It's all so short and sweet. It's all relative, I guess, for me, I do have coffee, in a certain way, I just didn't eat a lot of food.
Well, at this time, like the end of the executive session, we're gonna have a vote on that, to discuss points that bargained negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
We already did that.
Wait, 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 hold up, sir, sorry, I already got it.
Yeah, we already did that. We needed just to end the normal meeting.
I got trustee Alito and trustee Belkine.
He nailed it, I asked for a nail set.
We have a budget meeting on the day of the sixteenth.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mayor?
Aye. The other twenty-sixth.
You don't have nothing to do, it's done. What you saw today, all the changes were done. We did the first two, we had two meetings. So this would have been the third.